Good morning. We'll call the regular meeting of Tuesday, August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Everyone, please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Chair. Please pray with me if you like. Dear merciful and heavenly Father, we come before you with bowed heads and humbled hearts. Dear Lord, we give you thanks for life and the comfort that you provide us. We are thankful for the many blessings and day-day love you so graciously provide. Today, Almighty, we ask for your guidance as we perform the business of today that affects our community. Please, please guide the decisions of our leaders that benefit all residents of Saint Lucy County. We continue to ask for protection over our children during, during school year and beyond. We ask all these and more in your beautiful name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This morning, we're gonna start out with the district meetings. We'll start out with the environmental control district meeting.
Thank you. Called to order the environmental patrol board. First item of business is general public comment. Anyone wishing to address the environmental patrol board? Seeing no movement, we'll come back to the board, looking for approval of the minutes from the meeting, environmental control meeting of May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
We have approval.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Alright, there is no consent agenda, nor is there a regular agenda. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
We'll come to order Saint Lucy County Erosion District. First on the agenda is general public comment. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of July nineteenth. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Consent agenda? Is there a motion?
Second.
Who made the motion?
I'm ready.
Thank you. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. There's no regular agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Come together is the Sustainability District. Open up for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board? Seeing no movement? Closed public comment. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from May seventeenth and July nineteenth. Do you have an emotion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. There are no items on the consent agenda, nor are there any on the regular agenda. A motion to adjourn?
So moved. We'll call together to mosquito control district agenda. Any general public comment? Seeing no general public comment, I'll close the general public comment and I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes of the July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two mosquito control. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Aye, motion carries. Consent agenda warrants forty through, forty-one through forty-four.
Move approval.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Aye. There are no regular items scheduled. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, everyone. That was easy peasy. We'll move right back to the regular general meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the B O C C informal meeting of July twelfth.
We have approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Aye, motion carries.
Mister Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
We forgot public comment.
Oh, any, I apologize. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda today? If so, now would be the time. Public hearing. Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Thank you. What's that?
He didn't have enough coffee this morning, Chair.
Three cups.
We're here for you.
Well, I appreciate that. Okay, this morning, we have a proclamation. And this proclamation is twenty-two, one forty-one, proclaiming August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two as women's equality in Saint Lucy County to commemorate the nineteen-twenty certification of the Nineteenth Amendment to the Constitution granting women the right to vote. Accepting this morning will be Sabrina Taylor, President of Legal of Women Voters of Saint Lucy County. And Sabrina, would you meet me over at the podium?
A resolution proclaiming August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two as Women's Equality Day in Saint Lucy County, Florida. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Saint Lucy County, Florida, has made the following determinations. August twenty-sixth is Women's Equality Day in the United States, a day to commemorate the Nineteenth Amendment to the Constitution that gave women rights to vote. The fight for women's rights in the United States began on July nineteenth, eighteen forty-eight, with the Seneca Falls Convention, when over two hundred women gathered to discuss the issues and discrimination that women faced based on their gender. They believed they deserved to be equal to men economically, legally, socially, and representatively. In eighteen sixty-nine, Susan B. Anthony founded the National Women's Suffrage Association, but it wasn't until eighteen eighty-six that they got Congress to consider the amendment to give women, women the right to vote, which was denied. It took thirty-four more years before the suffragists got the amendment to Congress, again aided by some new states that had entered the Union and had equal rights for women in their own Constitution. Women took to the streets to protest for their rights. And in May nineteen nineteen, the majority of the U.S. Congress adopted the Nineteenth Amendment, also known as the Susan B. Anthony Amendment, giving women the right to vote. The amendment only became official on August second, nineteen twenty, when Bainbridge Colby, the Secretary of State, signed the proclamation that gave women in the United States the right to vote. In nineteen seventy-three, the U.S. Congress designated August twenty-sixth as Women's Equality Day. The date was selected to commemorate the nineteen-twenty certification of the Nineteenth Amendment to the Constitution, granting women the right to vote. This was the culmination of massive peaceful civil rights movement by women that had its formal beginnings in eighteen forty-eight at the world's first Women's Right Convention in Seneca Falls, New York. The observance of Women's Equality Day not only commemorates the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment, but also calls attention to women's continuing efforts toward full equality. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Saint Lucy County, Florida, does hereby proclaim August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two as Women's Equality Day in Saint Lucy County, Florida, and encourages all residents to show their support for all women by joining the many organizations that are continuing the fight for equal rights for women, passed and duly adopted the sixteenth day of August, two thousand and twenty-two.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Bart, second. Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Mister Chair, Commissioners. I am Sabrina Taylor, the current President of the Saint Lucy County League of Women Voters. We are a national, we are a chapter of the national chapter, National Legal Women Voters in the U.S., which was founded in nineteen twenty as an activist grassroots organization that believed that voters would play a critical role in democracy. We are proudly nonpartisan, and it means we focus on the issues, not the candidate nor the party. And we work with the singular goal of expanding, protecting, expanding and protecting voter rights. So thank you always for the opportunity to be before you. We appreciate the recognition and the very important role that women play in this democracy. And we continue to fight not only for the right, for the right of women, to continue to be able to vote for all people who are American citizens. Thank you so much. Continue having a great day, and we shall see you soon.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have a presentation of this morning from the Saint Lucy County Schools Update, and that'll be presented today by Dr. John R. Prince, Superintendent of Saint Lucy County Public Schools. Good morning.
Good morning. It's great to see the county commissioners, commissioners, and welcome. I appreciate this opportunity to share some good news of the, of the district. Ms. Martin, she's our Chief Communications Officer. She's passing out, "We Are Saint Lucy County Public Schools."
Thank you.
Just some great superlatives in a kind of a visual format that kind of goes along with my presentation today, which will be pretty brief, but just some things that we're very, very proud of. So, we are Saint Lucy.
We are Saint Lucy Public Schools. We are accoladed, recognized, accredited, merited. We are innovators, builders, career-driven, future-forward leaders. We are community-focused, partners, mentors, contributors. We are historic, unique, extraordinary, admired. We are champions, energetic, competitive, game changers. We are creatives, dancers, artists, musicians. We are diverse, inclusive, collaborative, empowering. We are caregivers, protectors, supportive, attentive. Today's learners, tomorrow's leaders. We are Saint Lucy Public Schools.
So last night, I did this presentation for another group, and the sound didn't work, so I kind of acted this out, almost like a mime as they, as they watched the video. But we have so much great news from the district, and it all starts with our employees. We're the largest employer in the county with over five thousand employees. And I'd also like to say, you know, that we've got our act together when it comes to our relationship with our employees. When you read across the district, a lot of strife between our, you know, bargaining groups and management. And we seem to settle before the school year gets started almost every single year with pay raises for all of our employees. And once again, we did that again this year, and that just speaks to the morale that we have in our district. And that really has translated into results. So the first graph that I wanted to share is our state ranking out of sixty-seven counties. Over the last fifteen to twenty years, we've been in the bottom third consistently with overall student performance. And that is basic, based on standardized test scores. And you'll see a change over the last four years where we started kind of moving on up. In other words, if you had stock in Saint Lucy Public Schools, you would have made a fortune over the last five years investing in us. Because we've gone from forty-fifth to thirty-second. We peaked at twenty-second in two thousand and eighteen, and then we had the pandemic. But I'd also like to say that we had the strongest year we've had since two thousand and eighteen last year, where we rebounded. And last year was not a normal year until the governor's executive order with regards to quarantines. At one time, we had over six thousand students quarantined last year for ten days. So that's a real tribute to the work of our teachers and our staffs. We had a very robust summer school program with over five thousand targeted students attending those, so I'm really proud of the work we've done. I'd also like to say I've come and presented before, and we've really touted our graduation rate. But today's not just about graduation rates. It's about a number of powerful metrics that we've watched very closely that really indicates the success of our school district. Starting with that graduation rank, we rank fifth in the state. It is hard to graduate in the state of Florida. Okay? It's hard. You've got to pass a tenth-grade reading test. You've got to pass an algebra test. I challenge any of you on the dais to take the algebra exam because it's a bear. It is very difficult to pass. And our seniors are passing those tests, and it's a real indication of the success of our district. I'd also like to add, there's only four counties out of sixty-seven that have had five consecutive years of a graduation rate exceeding ninety percent. Okay? Saint Lucy County is one of them. And I'd also like to add, spoiler alert, it's gonna be a sixth consecutive year because we're gonna exceed ninety percent for last year as well. Though, one of the things I'm most proud of is our subgroups. We are an outlier district in the state of Florida where we have closed the achievement gap with regards to graduations between our Hispanic, Black, and White students. Right now, for graduating seniors, there's really a one percent differential. What's interesting, actually, our Hispanic students are graduating at a ninety-six percent clip. Our Black students are graduating at a ninety-five percent clip, and our White students are graduating at a ninety-four percent clip. The bottom line is, we're all right there at ninety-five percent, and that's something we tout. We had a great rebound with a number of our schools attaining that A grade. But not just that, we had sixteen schools increase their letter grade. And in fact, thirty-six out of thirty-eight schools increased overall performance from one year to the next. Almost, almost one hundred percent of our schools, and we have no failing schools in Saint Lucy County. So some of our accolades. This is the biggest one. We're number one on the Treasure Coast. Number one in overall achievement on the Treasure Coast, outperforming Martin and Indian River County. That has never happened before. That is something we're really, really proud of. And not just that, we're becoming a destination district. And when I say destination district, in the past, we've had a lot of folks who lived in Saint Lucy County because of the affordability, but they worked down in Palm Beach, Martin, or Indian River County. What we found over the last two or three years is we're getting those folks back. They're coming and calling Saint Lucy County home, but they're also staying here to work in our school district. Not just that, this is a big one. We're fifth in the state in Career and Technical Education. That's not just kids enrolled in a class. Those are students that are passing an exam that allows them to leave high school and go out and get a job in the local community. And we rank fifth in the state. We work hard to get to that metric. We're fifth in the state for graduation. We're twelfth in the state for middle school acceleration. I'm gonna play my teacher nerd here. Okay, and why this is important is because these are middle school kids that are enrolled in high school credits in middle school. At the end of the year, they've got to pass a test to get that high school credit. They pass that test, what that is, is a doorway to college classes in high school. So you can see, see the success as kids matriculate through middle school, and they're provided those advanced opportunities. That's how kids are getting all that career and college readiness in the high schools. That's how we have that high graduation rate. And that also creates first-generation college students. So these are my goals that my board approved. You can see two of the most important one deal with student safety. During the pandemic, when half the kids were not coming to school live, whenever they returned to school, we saw a lot of socialization issues. And I'll say this in an oversimplification, they didn't keep their hands to themselves, especially with conflict. Okay? So we have to really create some, some mitigation efforts and also some teaching opportunities for our kids and how they socialize with each other. The other thing is literacy. And focusing on, we still have too many kids, especially in the younger grades, that don't read on grade level. That is something we're addressing with a passion because kids need to learn the basics of reading, writing, and arithmetic in school. The third I'm gonna talk about briefly is the referendum. We didn't want to confuse voters. We have not talked about it because we've got the primaries, as you may know, next week. So we haven't really come out and talked about it that much, but we will after the primaries are over, and I'm gonna talk about that and address that in just a minute. And then the last is to secure district accreditation. That's a process we do every four years. And that means that your graduating seniors, that diploma means something because you're an accredited district. So the referendum. In two thousand and nineteen, we went to the voters, and we asked them to approve a referendum. I will say the governor has done a good job. Anytime the governor and the state gives money to education, that's never a bad thing. But what they've done is they've raised starting salaries. Someone like my wife, who's a teacher, she's been teaching for twenty-three years. Somebody can come, and they're a first-year teacher, and she's only making eight hundred more dollars than, than some, you know, and she's been doing it for twenty-three years. It's called salary compression. Okay? So we've had to address salary compression through the referendum, and that's how we pay our veteran teachers, especially additional dollars, to combat that. The second thing it pays for, and also, we've raised seventy-four million dollars over the last three years. And that's allowed us really to take care of our veteran teachers the most. So what does it pay for? First of all, it pays for school safety. We contract with the Sheriff's Department. We pay approximately nine million dollars a year to make sure we have a resource officer in every single school, and we have two at our high schools. I can't tell you what a close relationship we have with the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Mascara, who also has helped us cover even summer schools to make sure that those boys and girls are safe during the summertime. The second thing is retaining and recruiting high-quality teachers. I can't say scientifically we've got a correlation with our district taking off over the last four years, but we've had three years of the referendum dollars, and that has certainly made us very, very competitive with Martin, Indian River, and Palm Beach County try to attract and retain the best teachers in front of our boys and girls. I have children in the public school system. I want them to have the best, and I feel like our community wants the same thing. Expanding our mental health services, we've added additional social workers and counselors. One of the biggest thing we had with the pandemic is kids not coming to school. So we've hired additional social workers to go out and try to find these kids and get them back into our schools. And also our special programs, particularly the fine arts, making sure, one of my children's in the band, making sure they have instruments, and they get refurbished, and the dollars pay for that as well. So as you can see, our salaries have become very competitive, especially with starting salaries for teachers. Remember I said a lot of our Palm Beach folks are starting to stay here? Gas is expensive, in case you haven't noticed. And sometimes our teachers are making decisions to stay in our local community. And we want to make sure we have the best teachers in front of our kids by really having competitive salaries. So once again, this is a renewal. This is nothing new. We're gonna be talking a lot about this after the primaries are over. There's a couple of referendums out there. We don't want to confuse our voters. But this is a renewal for the voters. Once again, the, we have a QR code. If any of the folks out in the crowd want to scan that, they can see exactly how our dollars are spent. We're very, very transparent. We have an entire website dedicated to it with an oversight committee. Charters. Charters are our kids. They are public school students. They get their portion of these dollars based on their enrollments. I just want to be clear about that because charter, charter schools benefited from this as well. Voting, once again, this is a November eighth, general election referendum renewal. We just want to make sure our voters know that. So that concludes my presentation. I ask if anybody has any questions. I'm ready.
You were up early this morning.
I was. Hey, somebody else was too. Commissioner Mitchell, I saw the commissioner at Alpata Flats this morning at about six fifty-five A.M. Thanks for being there, by the way.
It was exciting.
It was.
Thank you for the presentation. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a great day.
I appreciate it. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mark Satterley, our Deputy County Administrator, and he'll be giving a presentation on the ad valorem tax abatement.
Good morning, Mister Chair, members of the board. I think it's interesting that we're talking about the school district's referendum. Well, I'm here to, hopefully, one last time, talk about the ad valorem tax abatement referendum that's on the ballot for next week, the twenty-third. It's ballots have already been mailed out. Probably most of you have them. Voting in person begins on the twenty-third next week. So, this is, this is an incentive that the county has had on the books since nineteen ninety-two. So this will be the fourth time that we have asked the voters to consider reauthorizing the ad valorem tax, tax incentive. This is an important part of the county's economic development strategy. It's worked well for us. It's one of the tools that we have to help new and existing businesses expand. It only applies to targeted industries, and it really only applies to the county's general fund taxes. Doesn't apply to all of the other special districts, law enforcement, the school district, mosquito control, and, and other, and other taxes that you would have on your trim notice. Again, it's for targeted industries that pay a better-than-average wage. And it's part of the county's ongoing effort, this board's ongoing effort over the years, to help broaden the county's tax base, to improve the quality of jobs, you know, for, for many years, decades. It has been tourism, construction, and agriculture. And I think, you know, with the, with the decline of agriculture, highlighted by the fact that Tropicana is closing down its plant here in town, you know, it just highlights the need that, that I think this board has long recognized that, you know, we really need to broaden our tax base, improve the quality of jobs, include, include, improve the wages, again, as, as the superintendent mentioned, so that people aren't traveling down to Palm Beach County. They can stay here and have a good job in Saint Lucy County. Some of the examples of the local businesses that have, that have received the ad valorem tax exemption. You know, right here in Fort Pierce, we have Maverick and Pursuit. You know, Maverick was, was considering leaving, going to North Carolina. They decided to stay. They've created lots of new jobs. They've invested millions. Their new plant, same for Pursuit. They're doing a huge expansion. They've invested millions, which makes them eligible for, for the tax exemption. Expert Shudders, a good family-owned business down in Port Saint Lucie, expanded a number of years ago. And so even if they're in Port Saint Lucie, and Port Saint Lucie does offer an exemption of Port Saint Lucie's ad valorem taxes, but they are also eligible for the county's ad valorem taxes. And some people, we've been, we've been out in the, out meeting with, you know, HOAs and professional organizations, the Rotary, the EDC, talking about this, and people are, you know, raise their hand and go, didn't I just, I live in the city of Port Saint Lucie. Didn't I just vote on this? And they did. They voted on it back in December. But that's for the city's ad valorem taxes. On the ballot next week is the county's ad valorem tax abatement, just so that it's clear. I know it's a little bit confusing. Sanso Group, again, down in the Saint, down in Port Saint Lucie, in the western annexation area. You know, all of the expansion that's going on down there, Chaney Brothers, FedEx, you know, they, they have been eligible. Builders First Source was a company up on King's Highway, a trust company. They had actually, were gonna move out of town. But again, with the work of the EDC, the good work of the EDC, and our staff, we helped convince them to stay, and they have now opened that plant up, and they have, are eligible for the tax abatement. So that's really the extent of my, my presentation. I, you know, I think you've heard this. Everybody's heard this. But again, it does only apply to the county's general fund taxes. Doesn't apply to the school district and others. And the industries all have to meet, they have to be targeted industries. They have to meet that criteria. And so it's performance-based. So if you, if you, if the board approves the tax exemption, the company then has to make that investment. They have to hire the workers. And then the next year after that, that's when they become eligible because the county and the property appraiser will go out and, and confirm that they have made the investment and they've hired the employees. So really, that's, that's the only further comments that I have. If you have any questions or comments or anything additional you want to add.
Anything from the dais?
Mister Chair, I just want to take a quick look at this last slide you have here. It's important. You said voting is on August You said voting is on August 23rd. It is, but early voting has started in a number of places in the county. Those can be found on the supervisor elections website. And also on this particular ballot, it seems to be that it is on the back of the ballot. So you'll need to take a look at that and turn it over. And so it's, especially if you're in the one with actually Fort Pierce on the ballot as well. Fort Pierce is on the front. St. Lucie County is on the back. So be sure to turn the ballot over and take a look at that.
And one final point I'd like to make. This is Maverick Boat Group's tax bill from 2020, and you can see that they paid nearly a quarter million dollars in a variety of taxes and the special districts. And they even actually paid some taxes to the general fund. But this just shows, you know, that for that small amount of forgone taxes that this board, you know, temporarily allows, we get the new jobs. We get those investments. We get new workers paying a higher wage and all of the sort of knock-on effects that go with, you know, that, you know, good quality economic development. So anyway.
And the last statement should be that, you know, rooftops have paid a significant amount of the millage in past years. Now that we're starting to see a diversification in the commercial side, it helps to reduce those burdens on those of us who have homes. So having a diversified tax base with the commercial is incredibly important to help homeowners with their, reducing their taxation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, we'll get back to the regular agenda. Next up is the consent agenda. Is there any items that would like to be pulled for discussion? Seeing none, I just like-
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest the board have some discussion on item C1, the port grant. What I would like to do is have the management and budget director come up and just indicate on the record that there, even though we were unable to get the state grant that we were trying to get, it was vetoed. We do have money in the budget to cover if, in the event that we proceed, and we will not proceed to a reimbursement grant. The DOT is understanding of our situation, but we will not be spending any money until we properly allocate the monies. There are monies ultimately-
That was a half a million?
It's, I think it's a million dollars. We have 1.5 million. It's a 2.5 million dollar match. We have 1.5 in the budget already allocated. We were going to get a million from the state, but that got vetoed unfortunately. But we do have other monies available, and we will be recommending to the board some sort of reallocation before we spend any money.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Chair, will that be coming back to the board that we're given?
So, so this is the acceptance of the grant. Before we actually set up a budget that would allow them to spend any of the money, we will have to come back to the board to set up that budget.
So it will be spelled out then where those funds are coming from?
Correct. And so what happened during the budget process, it was, we had requested a half a million dollars from the state legislature. They actually allocated a million dollars during their process. They bumped it up, but then when it got to the governor's desk, it got vetoed. When we were making our recommendations on the budget process, the money was still in the state budget. And so we thought we were fully covered on this grant, and it ended up, that we ended up falling short for that specific line item in our budget. However, separate and apart from that, we also have 1.8 million dollars budgeted that is related to Harbor Point, that if we needed to, we could use that cash to get this grant matched. However, that might not be the best course of action because there are several other grant opportunities that we're trying to see if we can use some of the other funding sources to match it and leave our cash available for future grants. And so we have enough money in the bank now to come up with the cash match, but it is not in our best interest to do that if we can shuffle around the pieces of the puzzle to help us to secure future funding sources.
Okay, will we be reapplied to the state in the upcoming applications?
I've not been in that process. That would be between the port and airport and legislative affairs. But I have, I'll let Stan talk about that.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the answer is yes. The allocation for beginning July 2023 will be made in about three weeks.
Okay.
And the other thing with this grant is it is a five-year grant. Typically, we do try to come up with our match all upfront. This one, we actually have in writing from the granting agency that we do not have to come up with it all upfront. And so that's why we felt a bit more comfortable doing things a little bit out of the ordinary. But we do, but if we had, if push came to shove and we had to come up with a match today, we do have a source that we can fund it from.
It's not an obligation. We were on the phone yesterday with Tallahassee, with the state Seaport Office. So it's not an obligation, the first part of it. So all you would be doing is accepting the grant. You have five years to spend it, to come up with a match as well. It's not unusual, in my experience, having been the chair of Eppstadt, for a port, three years in, two years in, to come back and say that the business that we thought that was going to provide this match didn't materialize, we're going to provide that money back into the Eppstadt pot to be reallocated. But you have five years to do that.
I understand. I just don't want to start going down a slippery slope. Usually, as a general rule, this board has always made sure the funding is in there. In fact, I think we're required by state to do that. So I'm okay so long as it's going to come back to the board to tell me where that money's coming from on our part.
And that is the point where we will be setting up the budget. And until that time, the department can't actually spend the money. So while we are accepting the grant, we aren't. It's different from entering into the contract for doing the actual work. We won't be able to get to that point without setting up the budget first. And we will, so we have that control there in place.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, you're welcome. Any other questions? I'd just like everyone to know before we approve the consent that E1 and L2 are funded by the infrastructure sales tax, and the other one is, the first one is by the American Rescue Plan. Is there any other items that would like to be discussed or pulled? Or if not, I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion.
Does that include bringing the conversation back?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Townsend and a second by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Public hearings, Office of Management and Budget. This is to true up the last year?
Yes, just give me a second here. Okay. Yes, this is to true up the budget for last fiscal year's audited financial statements for the beginning fund balances. Excuse me. So the audit of the Board of County Commissioners fiscal year 2021 financial statements have been completed, and staff has calculated the actual beginning balances of numerous funds. Back in December, we trued up fund balances to unaudited numbers, but there are some additional adjustments that have happened since then. So we are recognizing those changes. Those changes amount to approximately 1.4 million dollars in additional fund balance. Additionally, we've looked at some of our revenue estimates and made some revisions, and those revisions equate to approximately a million dollars, as well as making adjustments that transfer money between one fund to another, which total about 4.2 million dollars. All those together total about, total 6,598,020. That's the amount that this resolution increases the county's budget by. This public hearing was advertised on Thursday, August 11th, and staff recommends approval of the budget resolution amending the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public would like to discuss this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close. Public comment? Do we have a motion?
Move approval, staff recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is 9A B, Planning and Development Services. And again, this is, this item is quasi-judicial.
Mr. Chair, I've only spoken with staff and received copies of emails.
Same. I've spoken to staff and neighbors.
Spoken to staff, and I got an email, 946, last night, from an individual, and I'm just finding it now. Clay Beckton. It was an email addressed to Mr. Benton. I'll make that part of the record. I also sent it to the aides for their commissioners, but it was very early this morning. So sorry about that. I just-
We'd already received it.
Did you see it? Okay, okay.
And also staff and the email and the reply from Mr. Benton. Corey, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Mitchell, members of the board. Corey Benton, planning manager for the record, Planning and Development Services. Agenda item 9B1 is a public hearing for a major adjustment to an existing conditional use permit for DLF citrus located at 150 North Graves Road, St. Lucie County. Here's an aerial of the subject site, which is situated on the north side of Orange Avenue, east of Header Canal Road and west of Shin Road on 19.34 acres. The subject facility was granted a conditional use approval by the Board of County Commissioners in 1992, associated site plan to develop a citrus processing and packing facility that's roughly 51,000 square feet in size. The applicant is petitioning an adjustment to that conditional use to expand by approximately 34,000 square feet, to add cold storage and refrigeration to the facility, reorient and modify their truck loading areas, as well as add truck and trailer parking on the north side of the facility, and other improvements that we'll discuss here shortly. Again, at the northeast corner of Graves Road. When this project was developed in the early to mid-'90s, improvements to Graves Road to serve the two driveway connections for the facility were made, inclusive of a westbound right-turn lane from Orange Avenue accessing Graves Road. And here's a photograph of the facility, which includes offices and the citrus packing, processing, and distribution activities. Here's a snapshot of the proposed expansion. As noted, primary access from Graves Road via Orange Avenue. The customer-employee parking is on the south side of the existing facility, with the expansion proposed immediately west of that existing structure and complex. With this proposed building addition, it would remove truck loading bays that are currently oriented to the west, relocate them for an orientation to the north. Additionally, the proposal includes expanded trailer, paved trailer parking area and crate storage, and a new access point from Graves Road, which would require extension of the paved right-of-way section, meeting county standards to serve this new drive aisle on the north side. The facility is required to be secured with fencing. Therefore, each access point would have a gate open during operational hours. The additional improvements, there's existing dry and wet stormwater retention, detention, the washwater reuse area, but the proposal includes the expanded impervious area serving the truck and trailer storage, increased dry detention area, additional landscaping on all property boundaries along Graves Road, the south property line at Orange Avenue, the eastern property line, which abuts utilities, wireless tower facility, and one single-family residence to the east. And there's a grove that's maintained on-site that would, a portion would be retained on the northern section of the property as identified in this plan overview. There's a parallel site plan adjustment that's being evaluated by the St. Lucie County Development Review Committee. Some of the feedback on the site plan would require refinement of the proposed building expansion to ensure compliance with the maximum 10% lock coverage of the agricultural five zoning district, as well as either an opaque buffer on the eastern property line, where the facility abuts that single-family property, or a wall waiver may be issued from that adjacent property owner. But the landscape plan today offers a variety of landscape material, trees, and shrubs to provide buffering, but contingent upon that wall waiver, either an opaque eight-foot-tall wood fence, wall, vinyl, something comparable, or a waiver issued by that property owner. Additionally, there's some comments for that site plan adjustment that our environmental resources department is working with the applicant through to provide littoral plantings and some other additions surrounding the existing pond. Based upon general compliance with the St. Lucie County Land Development Code and comprehensive plan, and support for this targeted industry operation that supports continued citrus and agricultural activities in our county, staff is recommending that the Board of County Commissioners approve this conditional use adjustment with fallen conditions. Again, compliance with the county's maximum lock coverage for the AG5 zoning district, an update to the landscape plan to comply with the most recent comments set from our environmental resources department the applicant has secured. Additionally, that all access points are served via paved section of roadway to county standards. Therefore, it would require improvements to that extension of Graves Road discussed, and a minimum radius of return at that access point of 35 feet to accommodate truck movements to and from, that the proposed gates serving the facility are open during operational hours, unless the applicant adjusts that design to bring the gates off of Graves Road to allow a vehicle to clear the right-of-way for restricted-access gate complying with our standards. Prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for this expansion, eradication of all invasive species from the parcel, and an updated listed species survey, and proper permitting if there are any findings of gopher, tortoises, or other listed species on the property. The applicant and representative are present today, and as noted by members of the board, staff has received two letters pertaining to the proposal from adjacent property owners. Again, this public hearing was noticed via display ad in the local newspaper, a sign posted on the premises, and mailed notice to all owners of property within 500 feet. To date, we received one letter in support from Mr. Nelson, the owner of property at the southwest corner of Graves Road and Orange Avenue, and one letter in opposition to the petition from Mr. Beckton, who owns property to the northwest of the property further on Graves Road. In that response from Mr. Beckton, he provided photographs of trailers that have been inappropriately staged in the county right-of-way along Graves Road, adjacent to the swale, as well as some storage of crates. That is a violation of the county's land development code. We did touch base with the applicant's representative and would be proceeding with addressing that with current operations, independent of this conditional use adjustment. But it is our understanding that the proposed site plan adjustment and associated conditional use that's before you this morning would allow for appropriate expansion and improvements to the site, particularly on the north side, to provide space for storage and staging of these trailers, trucks, as well as screening and buffering with enhancements to the site.
Any questions of, to Benton?
Mr. Chair, if I could ask one. Corey, I want to follow up on your last comment when you touched base with the applicant. Are they removing what's on the side of the road presently that doesn't meet our codes? Or what's their intent?
Vice Chair Hutchinson, I do believe that is their intent. The representatives are here today to provide additional input.
All right. I'll wait till they get up then. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would discuss this subject matter? Please step up to the dials and identify yourself, sir. Thank you.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I'm Clay Beckton. I'm the one that submitted the actual opposition at this point to what we have. What I wanted to talk about was being a good neighbor. Looking at what we've dealt with, I've lived on Graves Road now since 2012. The packing house has been there. It's a non-county maintained road. So everything that I've had to do, including the areas that are talking about expansion, I put my own personal funds into increasing those roads, making them to where I can get, because obviously, without having the support of the county, I, you know, I had to put those funds in there. The garbage situation, the trucks parked along the side of the road. Multiple nights you come home, there's semi-trucks lined up down the side of the road, blocking us to get to our house, trying to get to our home. It's not just me. There's other homeowners that live down there. You know, some of the landscaping that's unkept at times, pallets left on the side of the road. And my biggest concern is how do I access my property? Where they're going to put the entranceway is probably within the new, where the trucks are going in, it's going to be within a couple hundred feet of my driveway. So how do we deal with trucks coming out on- of my driveway. So, how do we deal with trucks coming out onto a road that right now is a single-lane road that has asphalt millings on it? My power lines, everything that run down that road are gonna have to be moved. Drainage is gonna have to be accounted for. There's a lot of stuff that I think needs to be accounted for in this plan, that you're talking about old grove land that we've have all, that's the only infrastructure that's there. Where is that drainage going? Is it gonna flood down to my property? Is it gonna go to other places? So, those are my concerns. Um, you know, and then really it's just looking at what, what is that additional space gonna count for? How does that workflow happen? I also have concerns about heading eastbound on, uh, Highway sixty-eight. There's no left turn lane into the packing house property. You're talking about a zone that goes from sixty-five miles an hour down to thirty-five miles an hour by Carter's Grocery. So, you're planning on routing more trucks in there, coming west with no turn lane. You added a turn lane to go for any westbound traffic, but you're gonna have just as much coming from the west as well. So, I think that needs to be taken into consideration also. Um, and really it's just kind of me voicing, you know, I'm not against expansion. I want it done in the right way to where it doesn't affect us, because if I come, my wife, my children, we live down that road. So, I want it to be known that, you know, I do have concerns for what they're looking to do.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Does anyone like, else like to speak? Please, ma'am, come on up.
Good morning, Board. Um, my name is Mary Beckton. Um, I'm Clay's wife. Um, I also run a business out of the facility back there as well. So, for me, my concern, my daughter drives now, she's sixteen. Um, I have a son, and the neighbors actually have children as well. So, we're concerned about, you know, them being out on the road, 'cause we've lived there for a period of time where we haven't had to worry about that kind of traffic back there. Um, they ride their four-wheelers, they do all the fun stuff that you're supposed to be doing out there in the country. Um, so, my other concern is same thing, blockage coming in. I have horse trailers. I have kids that come in for lessons, parents that have had to get around these trucks. I've personally put scratches on the side of my truck because of, um, semis being parked in the road, and I can't get these guys to wake up or somebody to move them, those kind of things. So, um, those are some of my concerns, um, trash as well, things in the road that are left from the facility that get blown out there, they don't get picked up unless we move them out of the way. Um, and again, too, where they're gonna expand is right, almost, I believe, close to the entrance to my neighbors. So, there is a lot of concern for that. Same thing as my husband. I'm not against expansion, I'm, I'm for it for, you know, all reasons, but it needs to be done in a way that it accommodates everybody and doesn't, you know, interfere with our day-to-day lives as well. So, those are my concerns. Thank you.
No, thank you. Would anybody from DLP like to speak, maybe address these concerns? If not, yes. Good morning.
My name is Bill Pittsley with MBV Engineering, uh, the consultant for the project. Uh, one thing I'd like to clarify is, um, we couldn't have made it this far if we, uh, had not addressed, uh, agency requirements, especially drainage concerns. Um, all of the drainage is addressed on-site for the expansion, uh, with the dry, uh, detention ponds that we're providing. The, the site's gonna be fully landscaped now, uh, which is gonna be an improvement. The, um, roadway obviously is required to be approved up to the new driveway entrance, so that'll be addressed. Um, I think some of the concerns that the neighbors may have with, um, truck traffic will be significantly reduced. Right now, they are trucking, um, to Tampa for cold storage, and then trucking back for packing. Um, with this new facility expansion, all that'll be done on-site, there's, you're gonna reduce trucking by four hundred trips at least.
Four hundred trips a week, a month?
Um, I believe that's gonna be annually.
Annual, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I, I, I see the expanded parking. Is that going to alleviate the need or the current usage of the right-of-way where trucks are parking apparently overnight?
Uh, yes, they need, uh, storage area for the trailers, uh, so that's all parked on-site now. Uh, the same with the crates.
And the reason being, as I, I understand what they've stated, is that having those trucks parked along the side of the road is a dangerous situation for anybody.
Sure, special kids.
Uh, and so, so, you know, a lot of these things that have been stated are, are code enforcement issues, and I would suggest to you that if this be approved today, that, uh, most of us will be listening to the community, uh, and getting complaints about code enforcement issues. So, I s- suggest they'll be out there. So, I would be a good partner, uh, good, good community partner and, and be able to manage those issues. So-
Sure.
I suggest that, uh, those folks will be, uh, willing to make a phone call, uh, whenever it gets out of hand.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Commissioner Zadowski, you kind of hit on what I was talking about earlier, but can I just go in a little bit more in-depth? I've heard conflicting up here, and I think staff's gonna need to be the ones to answer this one. I've heard this is a private road, I've heard this is a county road. Can I get clear definition? Is part of it? Because technically this is a canal bank, you know, so I need to know who's in charge here of this road.
Chair Mitchell, Vice Chair Hutchinson, members of the board. Uh, Graves Road is, is a county right-of-way. Uh, when this project was developed in the nineties, um, DLF, or at the time Sunbright Citrus, um, made a right-of-way dedication to the county, as well as improvements, uh, to serve the project. As, um, projects requiring site plan approval require paved access, uh, so there, there are improvements. Staff's unable to, um, identify this morning, um, at least planning staff, as to, uh, the right-of-way width and maintenance, uh, of Graves Road north of the project's boundary line, because again, when DLF, uh, Sunbright Citrus was developed in the nineties, they provided right-of-way dedication and improvements to their driveway. Beyond that, right-of-way dedication wouldn't, uh, occur until, uh, development occurs in the, to the north, or, uh, the county were to coordinate with property owners for further expansion of Graves Road. So, at, at least to the north property line, there's sixty feet of right-of-way, and the paved section terminates immediately north of, uh, DLF's current northern driveway, and those improvements of a two-lane section with swale, uh, drainage to support that would be expanded, extended north, uh, roughly a hundred feet, uh, to serve the additional driveway connection, and transition back to the more narrower section that serve, um, two or three homes and any miscellaneous, uh, developments.
And those are not county right-of-way, and they don't belong to the county? That goes past there?
We can certainly take a look. Uh, I believe there's about thirty feet of right-of-way north of DLF's property line that is county right-of-way. But I'm not sure of the, the current maintenance schedule.
Okay, the paved part, now that it's been dedicated to the county, if there's issues on the paved part, the county would be maintaining that, or would it be?
That is correct. It would be our responsibility unless, uh, a reasonable condition is applied to the conditional use.
Okay, now let me go back to the landscaping. Does our code not require that any new business that comes in or does improvements to their place, they are required for up to a year, if not longer, to replace any dead material?
That is correct. Uh, in the, there's an annual, there's an inspection after one year, and any replacement of materials would be required, and that being a conditional use, uh, with code enforcement or, uh, you know, with, um, authorization of this board, the, the Planning and Development Services team is bringing onboard a new staff member specifically assigned for compliance of site plans and conditional use, uh, authorizations such as this site, whether in its existing scale and intensity, or if the expansion were to occur.
Okay, and then my question is for the applicant's representative. Will you be putting in irrigation with that landscaping?
Uh, only where the irrigation is required for the particular landscaping.
All right, then I have to go back to staff. Is that required all across the perimeter, or is that gonna be just there in the front?
Irrigation is required to, to serve landscaping, um, where the landscape material demands, uh, watering. Uh, sometimes, uh, more drought tolerant, uh, landscaping can be served on the, the front end to be established with alternative measures, but, but yes, the land development code requires irrigation, and, and I'm joined by Amy Cooper, Environmental Regulations Manager, to help weigh in on that.
Good morning, Ms. Cooper.
Good morning. Uh, members of Lloyd, that, that is correct. Um, irrigation will be required as part of the landscape plan.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm just gonna strongly encourage you to work with your neighbors-
Sure.
-and the company to make sure that, I mean, that there's, like a good neighbor, State Farm is there or something commercial, but do the same. Being a good neighbor is very important, and I've seen since the pandemic, a lot more trash on the roads, maybe from construction or people not working, but it's a pretty county, and I wanna keep it that way.
Understood.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
Cory, did I hear you say that the extended driveway or the drive area to the expansion would be two lanes, then coming back south would return to one lane? Is that what I heard you say?
Uh, Commissioner Zadowski, when the, the project was developed, uh, in the nineties, the roadway was improved by the applicant, uh, through their northernmost driveway today. It's a two-lane section to roughly this point. Uh, the applicant is proposing a new access point a little further north, and it, the improvements would be required, uh, further extending north through their driveway, uh, anywhere from twenty to thirty-five feet past their driveway with a reasonable transition back to the more narrower section.
Okay, so that's to the north. My concern was to the south, moving back to the, to Orange Avenue, 'cause two tractor trailers are not gonna fit on a single-lane road for their business model. So, it is a two-lane road to the south of the entry point. And you suggested an entry point, okay.
This dashed, uh, shape, approximation of the improvements that would be required to serve that additional driveway.
But the southern part going down to Orange Avenue is also a two-lane road currently.
That is correct.
All right.
Okay, again, this is a public hearing. I know we've heard from a couple residences. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to s- speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. What's the word of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval with the conditions as stated, with the inference that, um, code enforcement will be notified if the area becomes unkept and complaints by the neighbors. Our motion, staff recommendation.
We have a motion from Commissioner Zadowski. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, just a question before I second it. Um, Commissioner Zadowski, does that mean the present violation's going on now, or, and, and that was one of the questions I, the applicant-
That's correct. I'm sorry, I should have been more clear.
If they're gonna be addressing that or not.
That, which is code violations today and that which may come for, in the, in the future.
Then I'll second it under that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're moving to the regular agenda now, which is ten B, Planning and Development Services, and we have an updated, uh, administrative approval from our PDS Director.
Good morning, Chair Mitchell and Commissioners Ben Bolster, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. I'll be filling in for Maite this morning, and we have two projects to update you on that received administrative approvals. The first item is the approval of a minor site plan known as Travel Camp, which is an RV sales and service facility looking to locate on the east side of US one, roughly four hundred feet south of Easy Street. The approved site plan identifies a roughly six thousand square foot display showroom and a roughly five thousand five hundred square foot maintenance shop with pedestrian connections, parking, landscaping, RV display areas, and onsite detention areas. On the east side of US one, as I stated earlier, the site also provides a future two-way driveway to the south for future connectivity with the proposed Leonard Road extension. The next project is a major adjustment to the minor site plan known as Runways and Commerce Center, which is also known as Isla Marata Brewing Company. This targeted industry project is situated east of the Treasure Coast International Airport on the northeast corner of St. Louis Boulevard and Industrial Thirty-third Street. The site plan adjustment identifies a four thousand square foot elevated open-air deck on the southwest portion of the site, and a five thousand seven hundred eighty-six square foot expansion on the northern building for brewing and distilling operations. Isla Mar- Isla Marata previously received a conditional use permit approval and an alcohol distance waiver from this board to allow for the onsite consumption of beer, wine, and spirits as an accessory used to the brewery. And that's all we have for the month of July. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Bolster? Seeing none, thank you, Ben.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Next up is ten B two, which is the Meritage Homes of Florida, Inc., requesting a major site plan approval to develop a ninety-nine lot, single-family residential subdivision within the PGA Reserve to be known as Meritage Homes Azalea, and this item is quasi-judicial.
Mr. Chair, I've only spoken with staff, and I believe we've all gotten copies of emails that came through the evening that evolved and put on the record.
Thank you. Dan, Mr. T.
I spoke to, uh, staff and the PGA Board members.
I have spoken with, uh, the representatives of the project, uh, Ms. Hammer. Uh, I also received an email, which I don't have the name of the individual. I thought I printed it out, but it has something to do with the, uh, a second, a challenge with the Second Amendment of the PGA, and I haven't read it completely. Forgive me, I got it like ten minutes before I came in here, so I'm not sure what it, what it refers to, to be honest with you. So, because there's a challenge to it, so.
Thank you, and I've spoken to staff and emails. Okay, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Mitchell and members of the board. For the record, my name is Jody Kugler, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. This morning I will be presenting Agenda Item ten B two, a petition submitted by Cutler and Herring on behalf of Meritage Homes for a minor, for a major site plan to develop a ninety-nine residential, single-family lot subdivision to be known as the Meritage Homes Azalea within the PGA reserves. This item is quasi-judicial. The subject thirty-one point seven eight acre site outlined in red is located within the PGA Reserve located west of the Commerce Center Drive, south of the Baron Office Complex formerly known as the PGA Learning Center, and north of PGA Brano. The designated future land use for this subject parcel is residential urban, which allows up to five units per acre. On July fifth, twenty twenty-two, this board adopted ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty to amend the adopted Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map from residential suburban and commercial to res- residential urban future land use category. The site is zoned as a planned unit development as, and is consistent with the residential urban future land use category. Again, this board adopted Resolution twenty twenty-two, one twenty-three on July fifth, twenty twenty-two, to rezone the subject site from commercial, general, and planned non-residential development to a planned unit development known as the, with a preliminary site plan for Azalea PUD. This is a snapshot of the overall site plan, which includes ninety-nine residential, single-family lot, sub, lot, lot homes with associated park landscaping, the teakiller, use area, and drainage infrastructure. The project is designed to improve the project perimeter, creating a strategic buffering between the residential neighborhood and the Commercial Center Drive right-of-way. This will promote active pedestrian transportation such as walking and cycling, as well as recreational usage act along the perimeter sidewalk. The internal sidewalk network will ensure residents within the planned unit development have access to exterior sidewalk system traversing to and from the commercial parcels on Reserve Boulevard. There is a one-acre open space area at the north of the site, which features ample landscaping and a walking path for the residents. The development has two existing driveways. Driveway one will be, the first driveway will be the main access opening on Commerce Center Drive with restricted access gates for the Azalea subdivision residents only. The second driveway will be the emergency access only and will be gated with signs posted. The developer has provided a variety of architectural elements, which includes one and two-story single homes, single-story homes. The finished front facade will be a natural gray, white, and light beige exterior colors with a choice of front porches, decorative stone, and shutters with a single roof, with a shingle roof and a paver driveways. Staff is recommending as a conditional approval that no two adjoining, single-family homes shall have the same front architectural elevation. The maximum height will not exceed the thirty-five feet allowable. The site plan depicts four lots to be used as dry model construction as a condition of- As a condition of approval, the applicant shall submit an agreement to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners prior to the issuance of a building permit. The agreement should outline the hours of operation, length of time, and ADA compliance. The major site plan conforms to the standards of review as set forth in the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Section eleven point zero two point zero seven, and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends the county, the Board of County Commission approve the major site plan subject to the following conditions outlined in your draft resolution twenty twenty-two one forty-five. Note two, adjoining single-family homes shall have the same front architectural elevation. Prior to any building permits issued for the dry model construction, the developer shall submit an agreement to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners in accordance with the Land Development Code, Section eleven point zero three point zero one, Friend C. Prior to final plat approval, the applicant shall provide either one of the following: an updated HOA or POA documentation, which shows an additional monthly assessment fee to the Meritage Homes Azalea slash Meritage PGA Reserve residents within the HOA agreement per lot, or an updated landscape plan to the St. Lucie County representing, St. Lucie County representing an approved and maintained median and berm with the associated landscaping, vegetation, and associated irrigation, and notes including but not limited to the maintenance items such as pressure washing and sidewalks maintenance. This concludes my presentation.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Jody, when we had the last discussion on this, there was a question about taking the landscaping, whether there was going to be, they were supposed to go back to PGA and discuss with the developer whether they were going to participate in a per-building stipend, if you will, for the landscaping maintenance, or they were in a, the developer's going to take over the landscaping. What was the result of that?
Commissioner Zdowski, I'm going to have the applicant come up and answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kugler. For the record, Commissioners, good to see you. My name is Dan Soro with the Landscape Architecture Land Planning Firm of Kotler and Herring. And, and as you rightly pointed out, this, this site plan that was presented with the land use and rezoning application that came before you a couple meetings ago hasn't changed apart from some of the discussions that we've had with the Reserve HOA. And basically, our commitments are the same, the commitments that were made to you, whether the assessment per lot or the taking over of the maintenance and irrigation responsibilities of the median. I don't think the board has, the HOA board has reached a decision on that with them on ongoing negotiations as far as what they would like the assessment for marriage to be one or the other, or some derivative thereof. And I think you may even hear from some of the PGA Reserve Board members saying that that is, you know, effectively the case, so.
This is a regular hearing, so it's not, we're going to have public comment per se. So, I'm confused that it's been several weeks now that you had no conversation with PGA as to, you know, because that needed to be resolved before we come back here.
Right, right, Commissioner. We have had several meetings, emails, and in-person meetings with the Reserve HOA. I don't think as a board, they have decided, and Dr. Yvonne is here, I don't think they've decided what they would like the developer to do and which path they would like the developer to take, either the assessment per lot or the, or the maintenance of the median and the landscaping. So, we're, we're still open to both of those options, and we just leave it up to your discretion.
Well, I don't think, I don't think it's up to us to make that decision.
Well, I think it is because it's actually part of the conditions.
Right, but either or is my problem.
But they can't get their final approvals on the final plat because it's wrote in the without showing one or the other. Is that how, that's how I'm reading it?
Yes, Mr. Jefferson.
I share. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What he has stated is true. As of last week, when I met with some of the board members at PGA, they were actually meeting with them, I believe, at two o'clock that day, and they were still undecided. They didn't have a direction as to what they were going to do yet, so it's not been decided as of last Thursday or Friday.
And the developer just shake yes or no, you're, you're okay with that, with that being open-ended like that?
Mr. Chair, I think it's going to be forced to be, come to a conclusion because they can't move forward on that final plat approval, which means nothing can go forward, basically, no permits pulled or anything, and it's written in as part of the conditions to what's in front of us today. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with that, knowing that's there.
And it'll come back to us.
Yes.
And, and they are having conversations. The board, it's, the board at PGA is, I believe, working very closely with them. They're on board with whatever the PGA Board decides. It's a mutual agreement, I think. They're just waiting for the PGA to decide what's in their best interest, and then the developer's willing to go that route with the PGA Board. That was the take I had on from the meeting.
That's correct.
Then although separate and apart, you know, we did have discussions about the road, which is something, it's not a part of this conversation today, but I think it's incumbent upon us to have an informal discussion as to, about that road and some of the challenges that are faced today and going forward.
About maintaining the road?
Yeah, but that's separate.
That's separate, yeah.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure we clear the air with that, that we have another look at whatever's happening on that road. But that's all the questions I have, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions from the dials?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
They have public comment.
It's not a public meeting.
Not a public comment. I asked that before.
I'm sorry, I thought when you said it was a hearing, we were waiting till now.
It's a regular.
Regular subject, regular agenda. Okay, moving along, announcements. Also, we have an additional one that Mr. Jefferson will be adding to it.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Mark Satterly, Deputy County Administrator. Just some announcements. We have a busy month coming up. September is always a busy month because in addition to the two regular meetings on Tuesday, the sixth, and Tuesday, the twentieth, we also have the informal on the thirteenth, and the two, the preliminary, preliminary and final budget hearings are also scheduled next month. So, it will be, it will be a busy, busy month. And also, in reference to Mr. Jefferson, he wanted to make sure that we mentioned that there is the Minority Business Expo this Saturday at the Fenn Center, August twentieth from nine AM to three PM. And those are my announcements.
Well, thank you very much, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Get out and vote.
Motion. Okay, I was surprised. I said this is a public hearing, anything that's not on. So, you're a public comment, excluding public hearing items. That's not a public hearing, that's regular agenda. That means just we have to say who we spoke to.